Good evening. I am Mayor Pro Tem Ed Wood, and I am calling this regular meeting of the University Place City Council for Monday, August 4th, 2025 to order. City Clerk, could we do the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Boykin?
I'm here.
Councilmember Worthington? Councilmember McCluskey?
I'm here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Grassi?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wood?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem, we have a quorum.
Thank you. And would Councilmember Fleming be so kind as to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Certainly. Please join the Senate Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Are there any objections to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Now we have, we're on to item number five. We have several presentations. The first is an employee recognition. Dean Bentley is retiring, and Mr. Briskie, could you come up and join us in this presentation?
I think he's in retirement mode already.
Okay, so we'll start with reading a proclamation, and then I'll hand the mic to you, and you can do the presentation. So, "Whereas, Dean Bentley began his journey with the City of University Place on February 29th, 1996 as a building inspector, and over nearly 30 years rose to become our expected building official and senior building inspector. And whereas Dean's commitment to public safety, his knowledge of building codes, and his mentorship of peers have helped shape not only the integrity of the city's structures but also the professional standards of community and economic development department. And whereas, beyond his technical excellence, Dean is celebrated for the unmistakable spirit he brought to the workplace. From his iconic Hawaiian shirts to his infectious sense of humor, he created an environment full of laughter, warmth, and camaraderie. And whereas, Dean's work has always been about more than inspections and reports. It has been about people, relationships, and the positive energy he brought to every interaction, leaving a legacy that lives not only in the buildings he helped ensure were safe but in the many lives he touched. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of University Place extends its heartfelt congratulations and sincere appreciation to Dean Bentley for his decades of service, leadership, and unwavering commitment. Happy retirement, Dean. May your next chapter be as colorful, meaningful, and joy-filled as the one you've given to us. Proclaimed by the City Council of the City of University Place, Washington, on August 4th, 2025, signed by Javier Figueroa, Mayor."
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We also, my name is Kevin Briskie. I'm the Community and Economic Development Director here at the city, and I've had the pleasure of working with Dean for 25 of the 29-plus years that he was here, and it's been great. And I think it's pretty amazing, out of all that time, thinking about all the homes and people he's been out there. I mean, he's pretty much been in probably almost every house in the whole city at some point or another for either an addition, new construction, a deck, you name it. And he's always done a fantastic job, and I think everybody's very appreciative of this. And he's also done a very good job with the businesses. It was always a pleasure working with him, trying to get the businesses open as soon as possible. That was always a pride of his, and getting them up and running and open quickly. And with that, we also have a plaque here. So, we'll need some more pictures, so you'll have to hold this one. So with this plaque, "Presented to Dean Bentley in sincere appreciation of your years of hard work and dedication, dedicated service, your loyalty and friendship will be long remembered. Best wishes and congratulations on your retirement."
Thank you.
Absolutely.
May I make one, before Dean escapes out the door, may I make one quick comment about him?
By all means.
Thank you. You know, I wanted to share, you know, I met Dean the first time back in 96 when I was having my home remodeled, and I was in Hawaii. I didn't have the Hawaii shirt, but, you know, I get this phone call from our contractor saying that the city had just red-tagged my building. And so I was really upset, so I called back here to get to express my anger and got Dean on the phone. Dean, I don't know if you remember that or not. But I was the mayor at the time, and I wasn't very happy. And Dean's comment to me was, "I did it because I wanted to make sure the building was safe," you know? And so it really underscored to me that we had a person in that position who really was focused on truly the safety and well-being of our community. And never forgot it, and I really appreciated through the years everything he did. So you're going to be missed, guy. You're really going to be missed. So, but thanks so much for all your service to the city. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember McCluskey?
Well, when I was mayor, and Mr. Bentley was doing something called the U.S. Open, which was quite the endeavor, right, Jennifer, and Kevin, and everyone else involved, Jack? And I saw him several times out on the course, and he was the coolest dude out there with his Hawaiian shirts, you know, and sometimes his official attire on. But he had the best ride in town, you know? He had the four-wheeler going around, and I took my grandson there, and it was really hot, if we remember. It was scorching hot. And my grandson, who was four years old, and I were on the course all day long. So we come up, and we thought we would get an ice cream, but the ice cream place was closed on the Soundview Trail. So, you know, we didn't have any more water left, and we were walking, treading along, and hears this guy coming bebopping along with a big smile on his face, and he goes, "You need a lift?" And I looked at my grandson, and he goes... So we hopped on, and that was the best ride that my grandson had, and all day long. So thank you for your kindness in picking up a hot mayor and a hot little grandson, so that, you know, because his legs was pretty tired and worn out at that time. So, your act of kindness and compassion, your attention to detail, your expertise will be sorely missed. So appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And Dean, I wanted to take a moment and give you the well-deserved thanks from me. You know, you really have represented what I look for in a team member here, and you were able to look after public safety, but you were also there to balance it with never compromising in safety, but certainly trying to think of it from the customer's perspective, and seeing that our businesses could move in reasonable ways, move forward as quickly as reasonably possible. Dean, I really appreciated that, and I appreciate working with you for my time here in University Place and for my time as a UP resident. Thank you very much. Best of luck, too.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Dean, for everything. And we're going to move on now to our next presentation, which is University Place Refuse Service Update. If I could ask Michael Gruner and Brian Holden to come up and join us?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Michael Gruner. I'm the Assistant General Manager at UP Refuse, and...
And I'm Brian Holden. I'm the Operations Manager.
And we don't have much to present tonight. We just wanted to kind of touch base on some of the changes that were made to our contract when it was renewed a few years ago on two issues. Number one, we haven't opened the first Saturday of every month since that contract was renewed. And it's been slow. We've averaged about 2.9 customers per open Saturday. I think the main reason for that was when we were in negotiations for the contract, the City of Tacoma had their transfer station closed to anybody outside of the City of Tacoma. So UP residents had nowhere to take their garbage on a Saturday. So shortly after the contract was renewed, they reopened their transfer station. So, anyway, it's been going slow. We have some ideas to help that, and we'll get to those in a minute. But the other thing that was added to the contract was the bulky waste pickup. And so what we do is every two weeks, we have a big grapple truck that goes out, and we are able to pick up bulky waste from the curbside for free for customers. And that has been very successful. We have 12 slots open every two weeks, and those are full as soon as those slots open up. So that has been very successful, and I think a lot of customers would agree that it's a very beneficial service that we're able to offer, and it's been going really well. That's really all that we had to present, other than this idea we've been kicking around. I know, I'm assuming I've seen several of you at the cleanups in the past, in April and October, and we have been kicking around the idea of changing that up a little bit. Well, actually, changing it up a lot. And perhaps running on a voucher system to where year-round, customers can bring in a load, just like they would for the cleanup, and they would be able to do that two times a year. And that would be during regular business hours, including those Saturday opens for the people who can't make it during the week. And so that's something we've been kicking around. There's a lot of logistics involved in that, because if you have been through the line, you see that our yard changes quite a bit during those cleanups. We've got to do a lot of Tetris with boxes and trucks and stuff and cars coming in. But we're trying to figure out if that would be a better solution. It would eliminate the traffic issues we get on 27th on cleanup days. There would be no traffic, ever. And I know there's a lot of residents that would appreciate that. And the wait times would be drastically lowered, because in the mornings on those cleanup days, it can take a while to get through that line. So we would love your thoughts on that. If you see issue with it, or if you think it's a great idea, want to give us a thumbs up, that would be great. So, anyway, that's all that we have for you, and we're happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Sure. I'll say I was not aware of your first weekend, or first Saturday of the month you were open. I'll take advantage now. So, good to know. Councilmember McCluskey?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate your milling around with good ideas to always improve, because as times change, things change, there's always an evolution, and the council should be open to those positive changes to make things flow a lot better and, you know, a little more customer service oriented to get to the same goal. So, thank you for always thinking about how to sharpen your sword and improve your business, because improving your business improves the services at large.
Absolutely.
And lastly, I would like to thank the UP Refuse for the Parks Appreciation Day, the barbecue, and some of the other events that you pop on. You make it extra special.
It's our pleasure.
Always. So, thank you for your, as always, your community support.
It's our pleasure.
Okay, I have Councilmember Fleming and then Councilmember Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. You know, Mike, I just want to also say thanks to you and your family for the commitment and the dedication that you all, as well as the business there has for UP. I mean, there's a true heart there. And I think people just need to be cognizant of that. You know, as far as the Saturdays go, I love the proposals that you're putting on the table. I don't know how we advertise, you know, that that's open. I know I've been there a few times, as you know, but I think citizens might take advantage of that if they just knew more about it.
Sure.
So, you know, as you're brainstorming there, maybe give it some consideration also to, you know, how do we just get that word out? Because it's a great service. It's an absolute great service. And want to make sure that we can continue to perpetuate that, but grow that too a little bit. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And thank you for being here with this, Mike and team. Couple of quick things. With regards to the Saturday service, I was glad to have the addition. I think the circumstances have changed with Tacoma being open now. And that clearly, certainly I assume, has impacted things. But I'm, I was glad that our residents had that choice when we put it in. The demand may be a little different than any of us anticipated, though. Perhaps that's something for the future. With regards to the drop off, personally, I think the idea of having a twice a year voucher is, would be an improvement. Though I think I've been in my 26 years in that line 26 times. It runs smoothly. It's not quite as long as I remember it used to be. But it is still a bit of a challenge. And it's also a little bit of a challenge scheduling my time. So I'm sure to be here for a drop off day. I wouldn't want to miss that. Any case, vouchers sound like a good alternative in my mind. One thing you might think about a little bit, one of the other, you and your team do a lot for our UP community. And during the drop off period, you help with our food banks and encouraging people to bring donations in at drop off. And we've all sort of been trained to do that. Maybe with the vouchers, if there's a way to continue some of that just in case, just as a reminder, folks have the opportunity to do the right thing when reminded about. So, meaning make some volunteer donations to the food bank. And, but I like the, all in all, the voucher idea with or without food donation opportunities. Again, thanks for joining us and thanks for supporting our community. You're a big part of it.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I also wanted to echo the expectation of just affirming the good partnership, the great service, and the expectation of when you do have an idea, that it is absolutely brought to council with the expectation that we might be able to react or respond to it. With that, I've got just a couple of clarifying questions from my own edification.
Sure.
You may mention other 2.9 average. Is that, as that's a Saturday, is it every Saturday since when? Can you tell me when you start looking at that record to be able to-
Yes, that's every Saturday since we have started the program.
Since you started the program?
Yes.
And the program began?
It was, it was the March after our contract was renewed, which I believe was in 2021.
2021?
Yes.
Okay. And so what I really wanted to affirm is, since that is every Saturday that we can account for, since the program had its inception, the idea that we get an opportunity to weigh in at this point, it makes me a little sad. I'd certainly like to give you help as soon as you know that help might be available to you. So my challenge is, which we could have been able to think about things sooner, whatever it is that is best for your business, knowing what that is, is, in my view, not just important. But as has been alluded to, the relationship that we have from the number of events that you've done that's certainly beyond your core service to us is important. And in that regard, the community partnership opportunity has a chance for us to elevate it and then be that much more responsive. Opportunities for council to look at these things when they're brought to our attention is one more way in which I think we can demonstrate that it's always a two way street. Whenever we get a chance to engage properly with our businesses, with our residents, with our constituents, as well as with the folks that see University Place as a city of destination. So just really appreciative of that. And then the last thing I want to just underscore is, I think it's a fabulous opportunity regarding the voucher system. I think there probably is more people that would come out and provide engagement with you if there was an intentional effort to market in that fashion with just under three customers per year over the last four years or so. It's probably a safe bet that the expectation of looking at doing it differently as opposed to additional marketing might not be the first response. But I really like the voucher system suggestion because one thing that makes our city, in my view, fabulous is recognizing that just as intentional as we are about providing community centered events that's full of fun and full of festivity and is full of family centric opportunities, is also when our businesses make it a point, as I alluded to, to provide these types of additional services to us. So I probably use it maybe three times a year. So if we get to three times, that'd be fantastic. I just wanted to say I just really appreciate you making us aware. And I'm confident that we, I'd weigh in in a way that would be responsive to what you see are best for your business needs. And so thank you again for both of you for that effort.
Councilmember McCluskey?
Thank you. Thank you so much for your family's commitment to our city, generations, you know, that have poured into this city. So I just wanted you to first hear my sincere gratitude because you've been the backbone and done heavy lifting for us from day one. And it's meaningful. So thank you. And thank you for your thoughtful consideration. Like Mayor Protem, I did not know about the first Saturday of November either. So I think more residents would take advantage if we could maybe, you know, make a concerted effort on our part too, with our social media challenges, channels, to advertise, you know, all of the services you do provide. So we could really enhance that. I think, thank you so much for sponsoring our 30th birthday. I think that's another avenue for us, as my illustrious co-host, Councilmember Boykin and I, we have that, to advertise at those large events when people are gathered. Let them know, you know, all of the services that you do provide. Just the awareness factor, I think, would be huge. And I love the voucher idea. As a single mom, I'm always trying to like gather up help for those cleanup days. Like, can you come and help me on this day specifically? So I think people could, you know, really take advantage of that if they were able to work with the schedules. It would be a huge gift and kind of a burden lifter for those that want to take advantage of that. But thank you for being thoughtful and considerate and for just giving us excellent service. I know that you do above and beyond what you have to do. So, thank you.
It's our pleasure.
And I'll just make a few final comments. First, voucher system, I think it's a great idea, especially with the construction going in next door. I think long lines of traffic in front of the new construction won't work very well.
Sure.
So I think voucher would be a great plan there. And then again, I'll echo everybody else. I appreciate your partnership with the city and your longtime dedication to what we do here. I'm always seeing somebody representing your organization at our different events and I just really appreciate that. So thank you.
It's our pleasure.
All right. Do you have anything else?
That's all for us.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. And our third presentation tonight is a Public Safety Update with Police Chief Patrick Burke.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a public safety update. I was up here in March with members of our team. Is that better?
Much better.
There we go. Good evening. Like I said, I was up here in March with members of our team, introducing members of our team. And I really put in a highlight on the four officers that we added back in November. And tonight, the goal is to provide a big picture, public safety update, provide specific examples of the impact of the addition of those four officers, and then just highlight some of the great work that our officers are doing. I'm going to jump right into a staffing update. And if you can look at the blue highlighted portion there, the total commissioned, what I'd like to point out first is, prior to the levy, we had 16 commissioned officers. In 2024, we added four officers and the community outreach officer. And then we are tracking November of this year to add four more, to get up to 24 commissioned. And before I go into detail in terms of where we're placing those officers and how we're utilizing those resources, I just wanted to pause and recognize both our council and our community and say thank you. It's a big deal. I'm grateful for the vision and the commitment that went into this long before I got here. And now we're to the point where we're sharing impacts of the increased staffing. And so definitely worth pausing and just sharing my gratitude. As you'll see, the impact has been felt. And again, just thank you before I jump into the details. You can see in 2024, in November, that we added the three patrol officers and a sergeant. With the increased staffing, we were then able to use one of the officers in the school district. So using half their time in the school district, half the time supporting patrol. I've got a slide on that, so I'm going to provide some more detail on that here in just a minute. And then again, as I mentioned, in 2024, adding the community outreach officer. In 2025, we plan to add three officers to patrol. So that would be one to each shift, day shift, swing shift and graveyard. And then have one officer that is dedicated to traffic enforcement and traffic education. Now, I've got a couple of slides, as I mentioned, on the impact of the staffing specific to proactive policing and our growing partnership with the school district. Before I jump into those, I just want to mention a few things in terms of the impact of the increased staffing. The first of which is, I've seen an increase in officer wellness. And that's really in two ways. After adding the officers, we've seen a decrease in overtime. And then I can just tell you from my experience working patrol and being on a special team in a sheriff's office, when you respond to a call and you have additional resources and you have more officers with you, typically for me and others, it results in a couple of things. One, you have more options in terms of the plans you're going to put together. You have increased confidence and with that, a decrease in stress. And so I can tell you that our officers felt that immediately in November as we added four people to our team. With that, we've also been able to better deescalate situations with increased staffing. I'm so proud of our team and the way that they slow down the pace of interactions, the way they utilize resources and slow down and come up with a plan. And again, having more officers on scene and more officers to make that plan with, it allows us to better deescalate situations. A couple more areas, you know, again, these won't show up necessarily in a chart or a graph, but the way that we've been able to backfill and support our officers when we have someone get injured. Unfortunately, over the last few months at different times, we've had three different officers on different incidents get injured. Not major injuries, but injuries that take them away from work for a period of time. And so having increased staffing allows us to backfill patrol and not feel the impact as much on patrol. And then one more before I jump into these two charts would be the way that we're able to support our investigator. And I'm going to touch on some of the work that our investigator, Chris Coffin, has been doing. But just excellent work. And for us to have additional patrol staffing that at times can assist with a search warrant or follow up has been extremely helpful. What we're looking at here is proactive policing activity since 2020 up to 25. You can see those 2025 numbers are just for quarter one and quarter two. What I'd really like to note on this slide is, you know, for me, the numbers tell a story and the numbers are great for several reasons. But what you should know about this is, a good portion of those numbers, how we got there came from feedback from the community and community engagement. So it came from direction from our leadership, but also, you know, feedback that we got from the community. And then them following up with additional information that helped us with directed patrols. And early in 2025, in the first quarter, we got feedback that, you know, our residents wanted to see more traffic enforcement, that there was concerns with speeding vehicles. And so we followed up with newsletters and on the blotter asking for, hey, tell us more information. When are you seeing it? What times of day is? What neighborhoods? What streets? And then we can go out and over the last three to four months, we've had 30 different locations where we've had residents either by phone, email, share, hey, this location during these times. And so we've had about 30 over the last three to four months. And so when you look at that proactive activity in 2025, a lot of that is directed by feedback from the community. Now, I mentioned the school liaison officer that we added last November. And before I get into the numbers here, if you were to take one thing away from this slide or anybody in the community who's listening, what I would, what I hope that you take away from this slide is our increased partnership and collaboration with the school. That partnership is growing. It's good for our students. It's good for staff. It's good for families. It's good for our community. Superintendent Chamberlain has been just amazing to work with, his leadership team there. And so I'll get into the numbers here, but just know that, to me, this represents a growing partnership and increased safety in our schools. And it's a good thing. These numbers here that you see in blue, we have dispatch calls. In orange, officer initiated. And what I'd like to point out here is, these officer initiated calls, obviously you can see there's an increase, for example, in 2024, 25 school year. Those could look like a number of different things. Our school liaison officer is their subject matter expert. He's their liaison. And so if they have questions about parking during pickup and drop off, if they have concerns about speeding, or maybe they're planning a fire drill and they would like his input, maybe they have a student whose parents have a parenting plan and they have a question about it. Our officer can answer all those questions. And when he gets a phone call and responds to the school and he lets our dispatchers know, hey, I'll be out at the school following up, that initiates a call. And that's what you see tracking here. So keep in mind, it's a wide variety of calls there. It would not be accurate to look at these and correlate those with, you know, say criminal activity or safety concerns. It's a wider array of responses there. I'll move into a few more numbers for you. This is dispatch calls per service. So this wouldn't include those proactive policing numbers that I just mentioned. These are dispatch calls. You can see where we've been the last few years, where we're tracking This next one displays crime over the last few years since 2020, both violent crime and property crime. You can see where we're tracking. Again, the numbers for 2025 are quarter one and quarter two. Again, this is the same numbers, but a different visual for you. This is month by month since 2020. You can see the ups and downs month by month. We have the same display for violent crimes. Again, again, the same numbers as the first chart I displayed, just a different visual for you. Give you a quick update on traffic with traffic stops, collisions, complaints and DUIs. Again, the 2025 numbers are for quarters one and two. You can see an increase, you know, tracking an increase in traffic stops. I kind of shared on the direction of some of those. Not all of those result from a directed patrol or emphasis work. But as I mentioned, many of them do. And as I mentioned, the, one of the officers in November this year will be designated for traffic safety and traffic enforcement. And so while it will still be a team effort, it'll be great to have someone that, you know, will invest additional training into and will be the point person for those things. These last two slides that I have with some pictures, I'm going to use them as talking points. It's okay if you can't see them. I'll reference the pictures. But I really just want to take a minute to recognize a few of our officers and some things we've been doing. I think it's a great way for our community to get to know our team a little bit better. So I'll just spend a couple of minutes on this. But I'll start with this picture in the top right, if you can see it. On the far right, I mentioned earlier, our investigator, Chris Coffin, has just been doing great work this year. He's recovered a significant amount of property. And in just a few weeks, at the sheriff's office, they're hosting an annual awards- They're hosting an annual awards ceremony, and our investigator, Chris Coffin, will receive the Field Training Officer of the Year Award for the sheriff's office. So that was for his work in 2024. Well-deserved. Just has had a lot of recruits with him. And then, as I mentioned, in his role now as the investigator, each week, we kind of shake our heads and just kind of sit back and say, how did he do that? How did he find that? So he's just doing great work. Same picture, top right, but on the far left, we have Ian Carpenter. Ian just received an award last week for us as a, he received an impact award, and that was for his work the last six months, really could go back to last year, though. Ian regularly takes recruits. He's had several council members out with him, members of the community. He'll take those interested in a career in law enforcement. He's always the first to volunteer. For our officers, their car is much like their office. And so when you open up your passenger seat to a guest, it's a sacrifice of his time and his energy, and Ian always is the first to volunteer. And he just does such great work. He has a lot of recruits with him. It's great for us when Ian and Chris have recruits for them because early on in their career, they come out to UP and see what it's like working in the contract. So it's a win for us. Last one, that same picture, top right. Third to the right, we have Tesla Turner. Tesla is a crisis negotiator, so she serves on our SWAT team. Obviously, primarily, she's out here in UP, but she serves on our SWAT team as well. And over the last few months, over the last year, she's had, there's just been a number of examples where she's responded to folks in crisis in the city, but also in unincorporated Pierce County. I've received multiple emails from sergeants in other areas of the county saying, hey, we had someone barricaded, we had this problem on patrol, we had Tesla come out for a bit, she negotiated, she resolved it. And so she's just doing great work. Picture below that, well, we've got a couple of pictures of duck days, just a great way to kick off summer. I wanted to highlight that for, and kind of spotlight our partnership and collaboration with the sheriff's department. We had the SWAT team out there, search and rescue. We had a recruiter out there, also a member of our bomb squad and his dog. You'll likely see some of those folks out at the 30th birthday celebration. I couldn't grab a picture of this, but we also, another way that we've collaborated with the sheriff's office is this summer, we've had our school resource officers from the sheriff's office out in UP on three separate occasions. And so they've partnered with our patrol officers, with visibility patrols and traffic enforcement. So grateful for that. And again, just great collaboration there. Just a couple more here on this last slide. On the top left, second and from the left, we have Dustin Markhold, he works graveyard for us. Just took a promotional test and went through an assessment center. He finished first in that process and is first on the detective list now. If you remember correctly, we, if you remember, we promoted Officer John Hammond at the start of the year. So we're making a habit of when people go through these testing processes that they perform really well, and we're having people reach out to us about our folks in UP. And it really, it just, I think it highlights and is a testament to the quality of people that we have here. And so likely at some point this year, unfortunately, we'll have to, you know, likely say goodbye to Dustin because he will likely get promoted. We don't know if that'll happen for sure, but in the meantime, he performed really well in the assessment center and I'm very proud of him.
Before you move on, real quick, we have a question?
No, I'm going to wait till you're finished.
Okay, you have a series of questions. Yep, I got just a couple more here. And the middle one, we have training here in the council chambers. We've hosted regional training, we've hosted our detectives here, we've had peer support training, which was professional staff corrections and law enforcement. And again, this is another opportunity to say thank you because our, we host classes here. We do this with support from council, support from our community and local businesses. And we have people both from the sheriff's office and from the region come here, and they walk out the doors saying, wow, you have won an amazing building, a beautiful city, but you have support and just buy-in from your community, from your council. And so as the chief, I'm very proud of that and grateful. This last one, on the upper right, we have Sidney Davis. She works swing shift for us. These are pictures from the World Police and Fire Games. Sidney competed in the 100, the 200, and the four-by-one relay. She finished second in each of those in the World Police and Fire Games. So not too bad.
Respect.
Yeah, very impressive. And then just the last two, you see a couple of pictures in the mix here from National Night Out. Look forward to seeing somebody out there tomorrow nights. We're going to visit about 40 neighborhoods. So shout out to our public safety director, Jennifer Hales, West Pierce Fire. Jennifer does so much work behind the scenes, it's just one of the many hats that she wears. But to make it so that our folks can show up, our officers that night, and everyone else that's involved, and it's so much that goes into it, such a heavy lift logistically, and it always runs smoothly, and it's such a great night. So just shout out to her on all the work that goes in behind the scenes on the front end. And then one more date or event to share with you, Coffee with a Cop will be Wednesday, October 1st. So it'd be great to put that on your calendars. I know I cruised through some of the charts and stats pretty quickly, so I'd be happy to answer questions. And then also, if there's feedback for, you know, for next time, hey, you didn't have numbers on this, we'd like to see that, or we saw numbers on this, but we'd like more detail, I can answer some of those questions. Or for next time, you know, just let me know, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, so we'll start with questions, and Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. Chief, as you know, I don't think I could ever say thank you enough to you and our law enforcement officers here in UP for what you all do on a daily basis. I mean, it's just, thank yous are never enough. I just wish we could be doing more. And for one who's been a benefactor twice now of our services here in UP, of our law enforcement, I just, it's a huge, huge shout out to all the officers out there. I do have several questions, so just indulge me this evening if you would. One is on the first slide, where it talks about traffic safety officers and patrol officers. Could you tell us what the difference between the two roles and responsibilities are, please?
Absolutely. So our patrol officers, all of them are trained and equipped, they have radars, they have the training, they can enforce traffic. But our patrol officers are being dispatched to 911 calls. Much of their shift is dispatch calls and responding to the radio. The traffic officer, they'll be able to support our patrol officers. And I'll go back to the slide for you. So the traffic safety officer will be dedicated full-time to traffic safety enforcement. And so what that looks like is that person won't be a part of patrol's minimum staffing. They'll absolutely be a force multiplier and be able to supplement patrol on a priority call or on follow-up. But on a day-to-day basis, unless it's traffic-related, a collision, follow-up, a speed complaint, those are the types of things that the traffic officer will be fully dedicated to. That person will come from our patrol ranks, you know, so we'll open that position, our officers will be able to apply for it. We have two officers specifically that right now have extensive training in that area and are very passionate about it. Likely one of them or both of them will apply, which is great. But that's kind of the difference between the two.
Okay, thanks. Next question is, as much as I love all the deputy sheriffs in Pierce County, I still think ours are the best, hands down. How do we influence the sheriff not to promote people so we lose them? You don't have to answer that one. On the next slide, on the dispatch calls for service for Q1 and Q2, what do you attribute that lower number to?
Well, if you, it's actually, if we trend in that same direction, we'll likely be, and maybe I didn't clarify this, so the numbers for 2020 through 24, those are for the entire year.
Ah, okay.
Yep, so to 2025, if we continue on this pace, we'll be a little bit above where we've seen the last few years.
Yeah, and I was going to say, okay, that's not good. Here I was really celebrating that, and now you kind of blew out the tire on that one. So what do you attribute the higher calls to, then I should say?
You know, I haven't done a deep dive into that. You know, I know our city's growing, but I wouldn't be able to give you a statistical or scientific answer on that one, just because I haven't done a deep dive into which calls specifically we're seeing an increase in. And that's something, if you'd like to follow up on that, I can try to get a little more of a breakdown and see if there are certain types of calls that we're seeing an increase in.
Appreciate that, thank you. Next question is, you had a shoplifting sting operation going in UP. Any updates on the success and how that's either continuing to go, or are you still doing it, or?
No, we haven't been running those this year. We actually just ran a team meeting last week, and it was brought up again, and there's a desire to do that. And so it's something that you'll likely see this fall, and, but we, up until this point this year, we haven't, we haven't been running those same operations this year yet at this point.
I know, and businesses that I spoke to, they just love that idea, and we're thankful for that. Also, next is we've got inter-local agreements with our neighboring communities of mutual support. Do we still have that in place?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. And then how are we addressing homelessness in our communities?
You know, it's a great question, and I touched just a little bit on our community outreach officer. And Cory does a great job with, fortunately, we don't see it in the same way that some of our neighboring jurisdictions do, but we're very responsive to it. Cory, I think I've shared before, there's times where I will get an email, and Cory and I will both be on the email, and before I can walk down the hall and have a conversation with him about he's already out, making the contact and providing resources and doing the follow-up. So patrol partners with that as well. It's kind of a joint effort there, but having that community outreach officer, you know, the last year has been, has been great to relieve some of those calls from patrol, and he's been great at addressing it.
Okay, awesome. Two more questions, and then I'll be quiet here on the dais. But, you know, when I look at our violent crimes, aggravated assaults, murders, rapes, and robberies, you know, any number above zero, I find deeply troubling. So when you look at, you know, the May-June numbers, or 21 and 19 respectively, how can we better address that to decrease that number? You know, will we ever get to zero again? Probably not, but how can we as a community, or how can we as a law enforcement, really focus on trying to drive that number down?
You know, again, I think to provide you the best answer, I would need to see a breakdown of, which I can, of how many of these are aggravated assaults. Obviously, that, you know, some of those types of crimes, we're not seeing very many of at all in that category of the different call types you see there. But again, that's one where I can get a breakdown on the different call types, and then when I see that, if there's certain types of aggravated assaults or certain locations where they're occurring, there might be a community education component to that. Some of it might be directing patrols in a certain area, but some of it, you know, I can't promise that there will be a science to it and be able to say, like you said, would love to see a number, would love to see zero for violent crime, right? As you said, there's definitely follow-up I can do on that to provide a more detailed answer and see kind of, again, a breakdown on those numbers. But again, I don't want to overcommit and say that I'll give you a method to...
I want to see it tomorrow, please. No, no. No, I just, I'm just wondering if we had a roundtable or a think tank of community leaders, you know, to sit down and just brainstorm. I don't know if we're missing something there or not, I don't know. My last question is, the whole presentation this evening has really focused on what our law enforcement is doing for our community to make it a safer place. And certainly, that's what we've asked for you, of you, and you've delivered. My question is, what can we as a council or we as a city be doing for you and your staff? What else?
Well, I'll be honest, I'm nervous to ask anything because of what's already been delivered. I walked into such a healthy environment, and I try to give praise to Chief Primo anytime I can and all the work that he did and passed off to me. But then, as I mentioned earlier, the investments and the hard work from our community and council the last couple of years, we're grateful, and we're seeing the impacts of that. I mentioned the training. People come out here and they see it and they experience it, and so it's happening. We'll see it tomorrow night out, at National Night Out. So I'll think on that to see what else. But I can tell you, I feel very supported, our team feels very supported. As I mentioned, we met last week, and that was one of the things we talked about because the things that we're discussing right now are not universal. It's not the, I wouldn't, you know, it's maybe not common everywhere, or I wouldn't assume that the culture we have here is present everywhere. And so I'll think if I can come up with, you know, in the meantime, I'll just say, yeah, again.
I know one of the things that comes to mind is, if I count my numbers right, we're coming close to renewing the communication systems that we put into place when we passed that tax many years ago for the county. Are we not there to refit the vehicles and the officers with the updated comms?
Say that with the updated...
Communication system?
I'm not sure. Again, I can look into that off the top of my head, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to, if we are, I'd sure like to make sure we're first in line for that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much. Thanks again for what you do.
Yeah.
Great presentation.
Okay, thank you. So we've got, well, every council member's on the list to ask some questions, in the order, just for everybody's certification, is going to be Councilmember Grassi, Boykin, McCloskey, Worthington, and then myself. So Councilmember Grassi?
Thank you, Mayor Proten. Thank you, Chief, for being here and for your team. I want to just echo Councilmember Fleming's sentiments. Your team is just top-notch. And to Jennifer Hale, thank you for all of the hard effort you put in and to serve us with excellence. And so I just want to say again, thank you, because as an elected official, but also as a mom in this city, I feel so, rest well at night, knowing your team is on the case. So I just want to say thank you. Just a couple of things, real quick. Wednesday, October 1st, Coffee with a Cop, do we have a location for that?
I don't think we do, yet.
Not yet? Okay, so we'll just...
Stand by for that.
We'll hold on for that. Okay. And I also had a question, along the lines of Councilmember Fleming, on the violent crime trend, just because as I was looking at this graph, I was kind of seeing a trend I was kind of surprised at it jumping. The only one that seemed to me not to be a little decrease or leveling off, and I know we're just in that first quarter, but if we could get a little more detail on what those really are attributing to, would be, I would be interested in as far as area and because, and I also echo his sentiments about a community roundtable. Just because these seem to be in a trend, if we're going up a little bit more than I would love to see, I know it's not a perfect world, but when we're looking at those numbers, those are impactful to me. So any more detail that we could get on that would be great. And for our knowledge to help and support, and how we can, you know, mitigate that would be great. I also, and your team has been great, I've sent a couple of emails to Jennifer and others, but I've gotten several community calls, emails in regards to our officers and their response to federal ICE enforcement, especially with our neighbors, Furcrest, recently. And I know that we have a current statement. I just think for the community watching and those interested, that's been an increased question when I'm out talking with the community, what, how our officers are responding, our officers involved. I know that we haven't had any change in our protocol, but if you wouldn't mind giving us our official stance on that, that would be great.
Yeah, I've been asked a few times recently, and what I've been communicating is that our team is focused on criminal activity that is impacting the quality of life and the safety and security of our residents by state law, you know, and by our policy, which is consistent with state laws, we don't have an active role in immigration enforcement. You know, I could direct people to an RCW or Keep Washington's Working Act for some more information there. But just know that, you know, I would just remind our residents that our, again, like I said, our policies are consistent with state law, that we don't have an active role in that. And at the same time, we're not going to impede federal investigations or their jurisdiction. You know, someone asked me recently if, you know, had this been going on in UP, or, you know, how often. I said, you know, we're not a part of it, so I can't give you a great answer on that. But does that kind of answer in terms of our policies and where we're at?
Yes, thank you so much. And I know your team has been really responsive, but I know as getting more questions, it's really great to use this forum to put that out there. So thank you so much for your work.
Councilmember Boykin?
Thank you very much, Mayor Proten. I've just got a couple of questions. And first, let me give the comments that are abundantly clear. Thank you for your leadership. I think that's what shows up every day and most often when you provide a report like you have, where we have details behind an award-winning outfit. That is not by accident, at least not in the lived experiences I have, excellence that is part of the outcome, is usually examples you can... is part of the outcome is usually examples you can see. So certainly don't want to miss the opportunity to also thank you for how you do what you do and the inspiration that you undoubtedly provide for the folks that keep us uniquely safe in the City of University Place. It makes it exciting to live, work, and play here. So, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
And how we have attempted to be supportive as a community and as a council, it's been well discussed behind the resources that have been made possible, both pre-levee and, and the impact that we would hope would be made. We're seeing that and again, in no small part to, to how you all do what you do. As I was looking at the tally though, I keep in my head mostly to be more than just a talking point about A-Commissioned Officers that really have made the difference in terms of staffing that happens over a two-year period, if you will, for the City of University Place. So you should look to see what those impacts are and how you see those positive impacts. Making it a point to be that much more communicative about that is what we'd like to see and, and don't be shy to share that with law enforcement as you see them doing a very, very difficult job. So thank you, Councilmember Rossi, for asking about the location opportunity for Coffee with the Cop. Absolutely coffee with some of the best resources that we have in law enforcement. So I would very much sort of like to have that when that comes available. But in that tally of A-Commissioned Officers, I looked at what you presented for resources pre-levee and through November 2025, I count nine resources as I look at the delta between that and specifically the call-out for the community outreach officer. So my question, if there's anything specific that sort of underscores those outcomes that come specifically through the COO or the community outreach officer, I don't want to miss that opportunity to give additional celebratory efforts. If there's something that you specifically want to share based upon that particular resources, I see pre-levee, zero until 2025, we'll have one, so.
So specifically for the COO though?
Yes.
Yeah. You know, I kind of touched on it and I didn't, I didn't poll Corey's numbers, our community outreach officer for this year. Again, I can, I can follow up with those. I have just more of the, as I shared, I guess I shared more about his professionalism and his work ethic, but he's responsive and I, I think, especially if we had people in the community that have seen his service and have interacted with him, I think, you know, they would probably just give him high praise.
They would.
Yeah. And what I can say about that, that, that position is great for us in a lot of ways, but when you talk about having the right person in the seat and for different jobs and whatnot, to get Corey back with, and we talked about this before, but I'll say it again, with his experience, both in law enforcement, but then also serving this community, we get someone that's very experienced, has a ton of knowledge, but more so than that cares deeply about UP. And more than the numbers, I'll get you the numbers and kind of share what he's been up to with abandoned vehicles and vandalisms and different things and homeless encampments, but I would share, we have the right person there because he, he cares about this community.
It really wasn't a trick question, but I do want to give for our listening audience the opportunity for the thoughtfulness behind that particular position and then the, the really unique element, experience that goes into really translating to a wonderful experience for the City of University Place. And so it doesn't, it's not lost on me that, that people want to come in and recruit here. Why wouldn't they? But in, but also there is a method to the madness, if you will, as to how these things come about and really bring a tremendous enhanced quality of living experience for the residents and the citizens of University Place. And I just think if, if we're going to pause and, and talk about our public safety impact, let's get it all out there. So that appreciation can be met with a, with a big community worn blanket that I believe that is, that it, that it deserves and it certainly has been earned. So, so thank you for that. That's all I have, Mayor Proten.
Thank you. Councilmember McCluskey?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Proten. Well, as I, thank you for all your hard work and the hard work and dedication of all your officers and their passion for University Place. It definitely shows in the community comments back, back to me. People are proud of our police force. They're, they're not afraid to go and connect. You made an open-door policy and each time a citizen engages, you were welcoming and, and gave them the, the facts. In some cases, they may not have liked it, but they certainly got a lot more information and a lot more background because you took the time and so, so does your staff to make, to make a difference. And that makes a hu, a huge difference in when we see our officers on the street and how our whole community supports you and supports your team. Because if it wasn't for those prior engagements, as we know, police are always there when, in certainly, you know, uncomfortable times. And so when we see the police officers engaging or, or there's calls to service, we as a community can rest assured that, that we're in good hands. And for me as a council member, I, I appreciate that because I get less calls, more customer satisfaction. And when I do get the calls or the emails, you are right there 100% of the time and so is your team. That, that's huge.
Thank you.
You're adding the community outreach officer and the school liaison officer, I believe is a proactive game changer for University Place. And you are certainly spot-on with Corey and his passion and he just has so much energy. He's out the door, he's smart, engaged, and he, he is creative.
Mm-hmm.
So I appreciate him. As I'm reviewing all the, all the reports that I, that I get on the city manager's weekly updates, the missing piece for me in those is the trends. I see certain things and I'm trying to remember back to past reports as to how is this trending throughout the, throughout the year? Is it, do you see an improvement? Do you see that, you know, there's areas of concern? Some of those things, the, in the reports, some of your, you know, you know, take, take on some of the things that you're happening. It may not have to be on a weekly basis, but you know, on occasion, just to, I give, you know, I'll just speak for myself and update on just how, all that data is aligning with, with how we're progressing to decrease crime in the city.
Okay.
As I'm looking at property crimes, I think this tells a, a good story so far. Because if I'm drawing a line from where we're, we're at currently, not so much in 2025, but going from 2024, because those are annual numbers that we have on this graph, going all the way across, we haven't had a huge spike since December of 2022, May of 2020. Those are huge, incredible spikes. And we haven't had that uptake and surges in property crime. Granted, we haven't, you know, cracked the net in property crime, you know, it's a crime that we're more reactive and not as much proactive in it as, as far as when we get calls to service. I'm just talking about that, that avenue piece to it. But I, I see a positive, a little more positives picture and hopefully those numbers will start to trend down as the criminals will think of, think twice before doing crimes in, in University Place. For the violent crime, we're pretty much holding steady and there's certain spikes in that, so that's more of a concern right now for me. But when I see the, the weekly reports, you know, when there's one or two, you know, I'm thinking, well, is that really bad for our city? You know, it is bad in itself as that has happened within our, our city, but in relationship, how, how bad is that really? And what can we do to even mitigate what, what we have going on? Do we need a more open-door policy before it gets to this level in, in certain instances so that they, the potential victims will have an opportunity to, and be comfortable enough to call, call in for professional help sooner, sooner than, than later on some of the assaults and, and murders and, and the rapes? Because it could, could be an escalation that's happening within their, their own, own environment piece to that. So, and with the addition, I'm excited with the more additions of the police officers, we're going to see a spike to, to calls and we're going to think, oh no, you know, we have all this crime and trap, and, but I, I believe that those numbers will, will stabilize after a while with the hopes that University Place has enough officers on patrol. So if you do something wrong within our city boundaries, then you're going to be accountable for it. And also you'll, you'll have a high probability of, of being arrested for, for it as well. So that's, so when I see an uptick in numbers with the increase in the officers, that's a little bit of my expectations because I know that there is calls for services or situations we could not get to prior. And now we're able to get to them plus more, plus being proactive, which means there's going to be more calls to service, more arrests, more engagements and things of that nature. So I look to you to let me know, is that problematic or are we actually making our city safer? Right. That's all my comments. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you, Governor Ted Woods. And just probably a good thing to follow Councilmember McCluskey on because certainly some of those comments and of what we're seeing in trends. I know I mentioned to City Mayor Chris Sager a week or two ago that an interest in seeing some of the trend analysis, our, our regular reports, just to be able to see how that's trending. And this brings some of that to us and that's, that's helpful in terms of our trend analysis for crime reported and such. As Councilmember McCluskey points out, with more officers, I would hope we would have more activity, more cases, more, more things happening. That is, after all, what the expectation is in any case. When, previously when working with the police, I, I could see that it wasn't a question if you had more crime, it's just you have more reason for people to report crime, they will something gets done about it. And, and that tends to drive the, the numbers to a certain extent. I was also reflecting on what I think we had before COVID, which were higher rates in almost all categories. I might be wrong and someone should probably check that, but my recollection is almost in all crime categories, we had higher counts than we're experiencing now. There were a couple of things that I wanted to ask more specifically about. For example, our DUI counts are significantly up and I assume that means, that might be because we have more time to be a little more proactive or to, for the officer to initiate things that he or she is observing. But I don't know, there could be some other trend that is going on that is absent of what's happening in the field with our officers. Chief, do you, do you have a sense for that?
You know, that's a great question. And of all the numbers that I shared tonight, I think that, that DUI arrest category is one where you see some, quite a bit of ups and downs and, and some significant jumps and maybe even an outlier there, like in 2023 with that 25 number. Of the other charts I shared, not any major outliers that really jump out, out of it, but when you look at those DUI arrests, there are some. So I was thinking about that myself and, and looking about 2023, you know, that number was up at 25. It looks like this year we're likely on pace for, for a higher number. Who knows what the second half of the year might look like, but we're on pace to be higher than we've seen in, you know, some of the last five years. And, and some of that could be that, you know, I mentioned earlier that we have two people specifically on our team right now that have additional training, that are making more traffic stops and everyone on our team is, is trained and has the ability to enforce and process a DUI. But when you have folks that are, have additional training and then are maybe working at night and looking for specific things and passionate about certain things, that might, you know, we have several of those people, that might impact that. And one of those just went to day shift, so I'll be curious to see if, if that tips those numbers at all. But it could result, outside of having a couple people the last couple of years, obviously those, the first few numbers on the, on the chart before I got here, but some of the could, personnel could play into some of that. Aside from that, I don't have a great scientific or statistical answer, but I would agree with you and I'd say that's a great question because there is some, you know, quite a bit of fluctuation there when you're looking at those numbers.
Yeah. Okay. We don't do, some jurisdictions do a DUI emphasis and if we may have extra officers or you're just sort of focused on that for the weekend or whatever. Do we currently do that?
Not with our, on a regular basis with our patrol staff and, but I will say over the last couple of years, we have, we have done it. We've had support from our traffic unit. We've had one to two officers who have reached out. We've had events in the city and they said, hey, we're working, can we come, can we come out and work an emphasis? And so again, great support from the sheriff's office and collaboration there. And so it has happened a couple of times over the last couple of years, but that's not something on a weekly or monthly basis in terms of DUI patrols that were, that were running regularly.
Thank you. One of the other numbers I've noticed to see with regards to the school district, the officer-initiated interactions, I don't know if the right term is there, I think it's three times as much as previously. Is that at least for the school year reported, for the 2025 school year? Maybe reading that wrong.
No, you'll see a significant jump there. And, and like I mentioned earlier, it, it makes sense to me that we would see a jump there. They have, our school liaison officer is, as I mentioned, their liaison, their subject matter expert. And so he's getting, likely getting phone calls that before maybe would be a phone call or an email, but when you have someone that's been in your building, that you have a relationship with, it doesn't surprise me that we're getting more phone calls like that. And as I mentioned, just keep in mind, those are across the board from parenting plans, parking complaints, maybe a school event coming up. So it's, it doesn't surprise me that that number's quite a bit higher than it has been.
Okay. You know, good. It's about having that relationship and being able to get that built and so when people rely on that relationship, which is really what we, what we want. Okay. Great. Well, thank you. And, and all. So one of the things that I was looking forward from this report, which is certainly here, our, our community has stepped up and, and passed the, the levy. We as council members did what we could to initiate that process and keep it rolling so we can get our staffing up. The Sheriff's Department, the sheriff stepped up and entered into an agreement so we could get officers into our community in a difficult time. It was hard to find officers elsewhere, or hard to find officers anyplace, I should say. And all of that has been coming through and this is delivering on the, the promise that we as, and local government made to our community that if they asked it, we would do something with it. And so I think we're beginning, we are soon, looking forward to getting more officers here in the street in, oh, 60 days or so. And that, that would fit well. So I'm glad to anyhow be able to see the report, see progress being made and admittedly there's, with more officers come more cases, but elsewhere at work, I've kind of seen when you put an officer on the street, they do something. You know, you're going to have more, more activities out there. So that, that fits. There were, and other places, one of the numbers that I, I have found useful or a couple of numbers that I've found useful is having information available on what the average calls per officer is and having information available for how much time the average, the average call takes for an officer. Both those things can be, provide a little bit more analysis at times. They would be helpful at some point. I think with computer aid and dispatch, those numbers are, are in there somewhere. So maybe we'll figure out, we'll see what that looks like.
Absolutely.
And then, also, when I saw this on the agenda, I'd asked the city manager about, if we could hear a little bit about the Fourth of July. I, I've been on ride alongs for about the last six or seven years on the Fourth of July. And I didn't go this year as I'm exiting the council at the end of the year. I have other things that I need to do to be ready for that. But I was curious, how did the Fourth go for us? So, in comparison to other years. Didn't have any standoffs this year, I don't think. So, we did last year, but that was a long night for everybody besides me. Anyhow, yeah.
No, that, I had forgotten that. Yeah, that was a long night for you last year. And you got to see our SWAT team in action. I do have a few stats. I'll just, I'll go over it real quick. But on the front end, similar to last couple of years, a lot of communication and planning. Communication in terms of newsletter, the social media, UPTV and letters went out. We went out, we sent out 19 regulation reminders in 24. This year, we sent out 28 regulation reminders. Those were based on feedback from the prior year. So we put out the reminders. We had increased staffing. Just, I'll just give you, I know we don't have a slide on it, but I'll give you just a few quick numbers. In terms of calls for service, in 2023, we had 51. In 2024, we had 37. In 2025, so this year, we had 44. When you look at the 20-year average, it's a low 60s. So the last few are lower. When you look at the last 20 years, when you look at this year, kind of in the ballpark of the last couple. And then specifically on that night, we had a DUI arrest, a warrant arrest, and then we're able to, this year, first year since I've been here, we actually got out to some fireworks complaints. We went out to a couple vacant lots and moved along quite a bit of people that, for some reason, had gotten the word that that was the spot that set off fireworks. So was glad to hear from our patrol officers that were giving me updates, that we were able to have the numbers that night to enforce some of those things. So we can't be everywhere at once. But I would say, compared to the last couple of years, to answer your question, at least the three years that I've been here, the three Fourth of July, it's a little, a little slower. Still a lot of activity. But we're able to get to more of the, the calls, specifically the fireworks ones. And then for follow-up, just to let you know, we had patrol follow-up on one. Corey, our community outreach officer, followed up on multiple. We will likely approach next year's season with those addresses with a little more intention and another letter probably. And then we had one resident that received a citation in the mail and infraction. And so that was based on follow-up and, and reports from some of the neighbors.
That might be the first rate infraction I've heard about since we instituted that. So, but okay, I appreciate hearing the report. I'm sure that Councilmember McCluskey too, as we're moving on with that. And very good, Chief Burke. And thank you for, your, your team does, represents us very well, provides safety to our community. We're, makes us proud to be associated with that. And, and I know we're delivering on that promise to the community as well. So all of that fits in very nicely through that. I sent some information to the city manager earlier today on something the state of Washington has announced about local programs perhaps being matched on a multimillion dollar grant for additional officers the state is putting in. I was curious if our vote of approval from the levy would help us qualify for that. So perhaps we'll, we'll find out. I'm sure we'll, we'll find out if that's possible in one. But we'll see how that all falls. So again, appreciate the great work and look forward to seeing more folks in our team here soon. But thank you. Thank you for a good report tonight, too.
Great. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. So I just have a few comments. The advantage of going last or disadvantage is that just about all the ground has been covered already. So I was actually going to ask about the shoplifting emphasis patrols, but you've already addressed that. I would like to broaden that question just a little bit to, how do you partner with businesses in general, not just on the shoplifting emphasis, but what do you do or how do you folks do it?
Yeah, thank you. Great, great question. And to add to the answer earlier, part of the reason we scaled them back is because the partnership and the way that we approached them, that relationship resulted in less of a need there for a bit. But the way that we approached those, and it started out, when we initially started writing them, was with patrol officers responding, getting questions from loss prevention, from managers, saying, hey, we have, you know, issues at certain times of the night, certain days of the week. And really, it started with a relationship and calls for service. And then that was a patrol officer that brought that and said, hey, can we do this? And then we collaborated on, hey, how many, how many officers will we need to do it effectively? And that was usually three to four. Sometimes it involved officers being in the business. Sometimes it was parked behind the business. But it started with, you know, a request from the businesses and then kind of some ideas from our patrol officers in terms of establishing those. And then, you know, as you remember, there, we had quite a few that were, resulted in a number of arrests. And really, for a while, changed behavior in terms of some of the folks that were coming to UP realized, oh, you know, they'll take me to jail for a shoplift, even if it's a candy bar, if, if they'd like to, to, you know, we had the discretion to do that. Doesn't mean we always will, will make that transport, but we have the ability to. And then another thing that we saw from the businesses was increased morale from their staff as they saw us and those relationships were being developed. So it started with, you know, seeing a need and requests from the business, but then just some collaboration at a patrol officer level with the managers in the store coming up with kind of a game plan and which time of day, which days of the week, how many officers, that sort of stuff.
Okay. And so that's awesome. Glad, glad to hear that. And I, yeah, look forward to finding ways to continue that partnership. Next question, I know way, way back when, I remember when I first moved to UP, they actually told me, no call too small. The police would always be there. And then, of course, we went through the budget issues and the, and the cut of the department. And now that we've got people coming, or officers coming back to our force, I know we're not at no call too small, and probably never will be again. But I, and I think I get this term right, call checks. That's calls that come in through dispatch that you guys basically elect not to respond to because it's a lower priority event or something like that. And I remember they skyrocketed for a while there. And that's part of the incentive behind going to, to our, to the public for a levy. Are you tracking still call checks? Or if that's the right term, number one. And how many calls you are unable to respond to versus how many you do?
No, I, the short answer is no, we're not, I'm not tracking. You described it. It's patrol checks.
Oh, patrol checks, okay.
But how you explain it, accurate. Not something that I'm tracking. I, I can pull some numbers if you'd like, for council's awareness in our community. The direction for me, as frequent and as, as soon as last week, was do everything we can not to patrol check a call. Now, there's some times where there might be such a delay. Say our officers are, are on a domestic violence disturbance and they're on that for multiple hours. And an hour and a half ago, there was a reckless vehicle that was, you know, eastbound leaving the city or, or whatever it would be, likely wouldn't be a good use of resources to make the drive and look for that vehicle 90 minutes later that was seen on our border, you know, going a few miles an hour over or something like that, a reckless vehicle. And so that, that might be how a patrol check is used. But in terms of, we have officers available, it's a minor public safety concern, or maybe not even criminal activity. To me, the direction is when we have resources available, let's go provide really good service. If you'd like to see, you know, I couldn't tell you, this is how often we patrol check something, this is how often we don't. That's kind of the circumstance of when we would, what I described. But I can pull some of those numbers. And, and again, so you're hearing it from me and so our residents know. You know, we have very talented group of officers. And, and with that, there's a, there's a high expectation. And, and part of that is when we have the resources available, go provide really good service regardless of what the request is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to see something on that when you get the opportunity. And just lastly, I would just like to say, you know, congratulations to all your officers who are receiving or have received awards of whatever kind. I'm, I'm absolutely impressed, whether they're winning a race in Australia or, or getting recognized as the, you know, was it the best instructor? Was that right? Instructor of the year?
Field Training Officer of the Year.
Field Training Officer of the Year. That is amazing. Absolutely amazing. And so, I think that speaks well to your team. I think it speaks well to your leadership and that of your sergeants. I'm just really impressed and grateful we have you and your whole team here. And I understand that there's a follow-up question. Councilmember Fleming.
I'll be quick. Thank you, Mayor Protem. You know, chief, the thing that really excites me about the shoplifting sting operations that you run periodically is, you know, when you look at, and I won't name the city, but everyone knows it, to the north of us, where their law enforcement did not manage shoplifting. It was a free-for-all up there. They've lost so many businesses in the, in the core part of their city. We value our businesses. They're important. They're our backbone. And, and for those businesses in our community, number one, knowing that they have the backing of law enforcement, that, to your point, you're going to get arrested even if you shoplift a candy bar. And, you know, and the message that we send out to those would-be shoplifters, that you come to this city, we're going to get you, I, I think goes a long ways. And back to Councilmember Grassi's point of ensuring that we have a very safe and secure community and that it is safe to shop here, it is safe to live here. And I just applaud what you're doing because that keeps our city vibrant. It keeps it growing. And, and those are the things that we're looking for. So again, I, I know at this point, I'm starting to beat the dead horse, but thank you for what you all do in that program.
Thank you.
All right. Say nothing else. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number six, we are moving to public comment. And so we're in the public comment portion of the agenda. This is an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments to the city council about any items not appearing on the agenda or on the consent agenda. Do we have anybody?
No one online as well.
No one online and nobody in the room? Right, seeing none. I will now close public comment. Next is consent agenda.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
Are there any objections? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. All right. Item number eight, city manager and council comments and reports.
Mayor Protem and council members, three events this week, starting with National Night Out tomorrow, Tuesday, August 5th. As you heard, 40 neighborhoods have signed up. So it should be a good evening. Wednesday, music on the square. A renowned guitarist from Helsinki, Finland is playing. That has toured extensively throughout Europe, recorded over 200 original songs. So it should be interesting. 6:00 to 8:00 PM, free concert here in the square, Wednesday, August 6th. And then on Thursday, is a concert in the Orchard, another concert, Latin jazz, salsa and Latin jazz music, great band. The concert starts, it's free concert, starts at 6:30, concludes at 8:00. And I believe we might end up having some special MCs at that event. So, so there, there is, that's my report.
Okay. Thank you. Before we get to the council member reports, I just wanted to ask you, did you have any data from the blood drive you guys just did last week or week or two of them?
I do not.
Anyone?
No.
I'm just curious.
Well, we can get you that information.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to just, I'll just go right to left and then Councilmember Worthington, then I'll go last. So Councilmember Fleming, if you would be so kind.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll be very quick. Just, nothing, nothing too important to report, but I just want to make a couple of comments. One, super excited, looking forward to National Night Out tomorrow night, looking forward to meeting all the residents and their various communities. It's always a great, great opportunity that pulls the community together. Jennifer, I've been getting these updates on what you've been working on. Thank you so much for what you're doing to pull all that together. Really, really appreciate that. You know, the other is more of a comment or question, but I would just love to ask that when we have big events of any size that are going on in the city, whether we're sponsoring them or not, that, this is a request to our city manager, that we just get kind of a quick update on that. I know right down the street from my house, we had a big event last weekend called Kite Fest. I didn't even know about it until I saw the signs, but went down, checked it out. Great event. But again, I think when those things are happening, I think councils should at least have a heads up that they're, that they're going on. Short of that, that's all I've got tonight. I'll be quick since we've been long on the other stuff.
Thank you. Councilmember Grassi?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will be brief as well. I just, I want to echo Councilmember Fleming's comments on National Night Out. I love National Night Out. And probably Jennifer Hales is sick of hearing about it from me because I'm like, load me up. But thank you for all of your work to make it happen. I love seeing the communities and neighborhoods. And it's just one of the best nights of the year. So looking forward to that. I also want to, you know, our farmer's market, I was out there this past Friday, and there's, you know, just doing a great job serving the community. And another touch point for businesses and people to come together, great time at the movie night. I know our staff did a lot of work to make our annual movie night happen at Cirque Park on Saturday. That was a wonderful event. So thank you to staff. Thank you to the community for coming and making that such a highlight of our summer. I loved being there along with Councilmember McCluskey. So that was a great time. And then also Twisted Cider Run, our staff worked on that. And I understand that Mayor Protem ran as well. I was at the end, not running, just admiring. Lots happening. And I love to see our, our city busy and vibrant and full and the community enjoying for the summer. I also want to say thank you again to our residents that are putting up with construction, sewer insulation, chip ceiling. I mean, everywhere I go in this city, there is something. There's a traffic cone jack and your team is busy, hard at work. Thank you for doing it safely and doing it well. And between 35th and everywhere. But I know that everyone's being rerouted a little bit. So for our community, thank you for your patience. It, it will be worth it in the end, I know. But I know it causes a little bit of frustration. So thank you for your patience with that. And so looking forward to our 30th birthday bash. And I also want to say thank you to those that have stepped up to be sponsors for that event. I think it's going to be a wonderful time for our community to celebrate 30 years. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCluskey.
All right. Thank you. Well, I was going to report a little bit on moving the park, but Councilmember Grassi did a great job. This, I would like to add to it though, that this was, I think, a huge turnout. There wasn't any parking left. Parking was, if we were selling tickets, it was totally sold out. So it's a great problem to have. And the, every, everyone really enjoyed the pre-show prior to the movie, getting a amazing movie like Moana Two from, from Disney, I think was a big hit. And all the people that made it all happen and come together for a wonderful event that people could just relax and, and enjoy. I especially enjoyed the fire dancers and, and the Pacific Asian dancers. They were colorful. They were lively, engaging. It just brought a sense of fun and free spirit and happiness and joy to, to the ambiance of the, the whole event. So I always look forward to moving in the park. It's always fun to see families come and enjoy Cirque Park. Initially, the, the park was a little underutilized, but I can't say that anymore. With, with, with the new playground and the inclusive playground and the skateboard park and the picnic shelters, it was very vibrant. It's vibrant outside of an event, but it's totally packed during an event. So we're, we're really making that park a, a regional draw and, and a total gem to our, to our city. And I guess, all of our hard work the staff has done and, and the attention to detail is well noted. People may not be aware of all the attention to details that our staff does throughout the whole city, but they certainly will realize it once it stops. So we will be a victim of our own quality program if that ever stops. And we don't want to do that. Also, I want to give a shout out to Sidney Davis, a Silver Triple Award after her extensive injuries. That, reading about her injuries, I would say, I give up. You know, poor me. But she didn't do that. I mean, she worked hard in record time. And she participated, and she had the inkling to think about participating after her injuries in the World Police and Fire Games. Wow. That's amazing fortitude and perseverance. I give a huge shout out to her. And hopefully, maybe council will see it in their hearts and allow her to be recognized in front of council. Because not only is and allow her to be recognized in front of council. Because not only is that an amazing achievement, it aligns with how our police are, their passion, their dedication, they're, they're in a position where they more than likely could get severely hurt or killed, but they circle back, they don't run away, they improve, and they become better because of it all. I think that's a huge story to tell about the heart of the University Place Police Department. And I would like to recognize her for her, for her achievement, but also for the way the, our police officers came together, supported her, uplifted her, as they do for every other officer as well. I think that's a nice story to tell. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boecking?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Let me just first by saying, start off, excuse me, by saying the gratitude that I am sensing, not just from the reports that and comments that we heard tonight, that is not lost on me, how it centers safety for our city. It's never taken for granted, but it's probably not enough celebratory thoughtfulness around what it means. I believe truly that the City of University Place continues to demonstrate itself to be that city of destination. And no small part is any of that, in my view, anything short of how safety happens here. I know that, as I alluded to, it doesn't happen by accident. I also believe that it starts with leadership. But as Chief has been clear and excellent about the team impact and how it is that it continues to serve us well, let me hurry to juxtapose that against other comments that I'll get to in just a moment. But National Night Out, it is one of those events that I personally wish I could enjoy. And I mean that from the standpoint of what it's designed to do is demonstrate very intimately how community works together well when it comes to community policing, community enforcement, and how it is that people can have a firsthand or front chair experience about that not being accidental. And so Ms. Hales, thank you. It has been affirmed many times, but I just want to acknowledge what everyone else also has about the real intentionality intelligence that happens to make that event exciting. And Councilmember Worthington gets to, I think, be one of those that boasts in his long career about the ways in which he's had experiences that has translated to pierce him. But in no small part do I want you to think that those of us that have had the first opportunity to serve see that as magnanimous as well. So just wanted to make sure I said thank you. I want to juxtapose that against the resources that I had a chance to listen to other public servants, other electors, since we last got together, our attorney, General Nick Brown, Congresswoman Strickland out of the 10th Congressional District, and how their continued service to ensure that resources comes into our state, then comes into our city, has had work clothes behind it. And I say that to juxtapose that against the really good opportunity we get in our city to enjoy these local events. And so I guess what I really want to say is, we make it a point not to let those good times go by uncelebrated by providing opportunities that are community-centric, that are unique, that are fun, and that are really inviting for people to, even if it's just for a little while, be able to change their focus to enjoy one another, relate differently, and to, as a result, have a bigger community through intentional engagement. And I just think that can never be anything but gratitude, as I get the privilege to be part of this council. It's just never lost on me how important it is. So I just want folks to take advantage of it. You heard about some events that are coming down the pipeline again this week. If you need one more thing to be that much more excited about, come out and see the wonderful emcee work that my councilmate, Grassi, is going to provide, not just in the 30th celebration that I'll get that privilege with her, but also this week for the Current Orchard Concert Series on Thursday. But the most important thing is there are good things out here that will allow you to enjoy yourselves, even if it's just for a moment, to get away from the things that might be a little heavy. There's a light opportunity to enjoy really fun, engaging opportunities in the City of University Place because it's also a safe place to engage. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think council covered things very nicely. I don't have anything further to add.
Okay. I do, however. So I'll start with the question first, and I don't need an answer right now. Just, I was on my bike on 67th the other day, going through that area that was just restriped, and discovered the southbound bike lane is no longer there, between 27th and 35th Street. And I'd just be curious to know what the thought process was behind that and if that's ever going to get restored. Because I kind of thought it was a safety issue, as I was cruising down the street and all of a sudden there's cars zipping past me a lot closer than I really was comfortable with. So, all right, that's the question. National Night Out, super excited, looking forward to it. I think that's enough said there. I had the honor of representing our city at the Samoan Community Banquet. I think that was last week. And that was a heck of a fun time. And I actually was asked to give some welcoming remarks, and so I did. And I, just so you all know, I wanted to recognize the contributions of Bravo and Charlie Company of the 100th of the 442nd Regimental Combat Team, which I don't know if you're familiar with them. It's the most decorated unit in American history from World War II. And Bravo and Charlie Company are based in American Samoa, or war-based. And they also deployed to Iraq in 2004 and 2009. I just wanted to recognize their contribution to our country and our community. And speaking of that, I don't think I've seen any email or communication yet on the APCCs. They're opening their new cultural center soon. I believe it's this month. I don't recall the date, but if there's, I'm sure there's a lot of council members who'd be interested in participating or attending that. If there's an invitation that has come out or will come out, I'd love to get more information to the council. I think we, there's a lot of people would love to be there for that, that event. And if it's already come out and I missed it, my apologies. But then finally, as Councilmember Grassi mentioned, I was at the Twisted Cider 5K. I did run it. My criteria for every 5K I do is I don't die, and I met that criteria. So, but with that, I would like to say it was an amazing event. If you've been to it in the past, I will tell you, you have, you've got, you've got to come back. It was, it felt like twice the size of the last one we did, and probably was close. We had, the day before, when I checked, they had 722 registrants. I don't know how many registered the day of, between the 5K and the 12K. The band was there, it was great. And actually, I talked to the band a little bit afterwards. And they were, they loved the vibe of the event because they've played other races before in other cities. And a lot of times, runners cross the line and then get in their cars and go. There was people just hanging out, watching the, watching the band. They had a beer garden and pretzels and apple cider and bananas and all this other stuff. And people were just hanging out, having a good time for at least an hour or two after the event, the actual run ended. And it was just, as far as that meeting our goals of being a, of regional influence as a council, I think this event really draws in people from all over. I spent some time talking with folks from JBLM who were out running the event. And so, and of course, there's local folks as well. And it was just, it was a great time. And I think that if you haven't been to it, you should, just to see what the event is like. So it was really, really just a good time and a good feeling. And that concludes my comments. So thank you. And that concludes the main portion of our meeting. We're now moving to a study session. And the study session will, item number nine, is the Six Year Transportation Improvement Plan update with Jack Eklund, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As you mentioned, I'm Jack Eklund, Director of Public Works. And tonight, I am bringing to you for study our annual update to our, the city's Six Year Transportation Improvement Plan. Now, on a related note to transportation, I can address your question about 67. So one of our projects on the list, of course, is our 67th, the 67th Phase One project, which, due to when we received funding, is actually after our Phase Two project, but that's another story. But, so this year, out there on 67th, we had recently, or in the process of wrapping up, a sewer improvement project out on the, on, in the same stretch of road in which we'll be also, next year, constructing additional sidewalk and pedestrian bicycle, street lighting and so forth improvements. So with the sewer project, we overlaid the entire stretch of road over the limits of where the sewer line went. And when we restripped, we are restriping to the final configuration of the road so we don't, a year later, then grind up the stripes and, and shift things, which generally, although sometimes that can't be avoided, but if we can avoid it, then it avoids scarring of the pavement. And also sometimes that's the scarred leftover lines that are in a different place can add to confusion. So we've striped it to the ultimate configuration, which then, when we come through with the 67th Phase One project, will be widening in some areas. So the one section where you notice that the bike lane has been dropped, that's just a temporary condition until we finish the, until we undertake the, of the project next year, in which we'll be widening the curb on that side of the street to restore the bike lane and then actually have the full bike lane, the whole length, where before we did have a section where there was a right turn lane that it drops out in a couple of locations. So we will, hopefully by, maybe this time next year, will be, that'll be restored and back to even better than before. But that's, that's, it's a temporary situation of what we have right now. So, anyway, that being said, the Six Year Transportation Improvement Plan, we are required by state law to adopt and annually update our Six Year Transportation Improvement Plan. This plan covers the years between 2026 and 2031. Now, the primary changes for this year's update, we have added one project, and that's noted as project number four. That's the Day Island Spit Road project. And this is a project on the, on Day Island where we had some, the spit road itself is the roadway as you come off the bridge that goes off to the, the left. And that's one that, over the years, with both some of the king tide issues we've been having and just general wear and tear of that, that that's a roadway in need of probably something stronger than maintenance. It is a little bit of reconstruction and also some sort of other measures to either, to both combination, perhaps raise the road a little bit, and also do some protection for the oncoming tide stuff. So that's, that's what that project is. And then in addition, we have been busy out there. And so three projects are being removed from the list. And these are what projects that either have been completed or will be complete by the end of the year. And that's the 35th Street Phase One project, the 35th Street Phase Two project. So that, those represent 35th Street improvements that we've been seeing over this past year between 67th and Grandview. And then also the 67th Avenue Phase Two project, which was 67th Avenue between Cirque Drive and Bridgeport. So those, there's still some punchless, well, 35th Phase Two has still quite a bit of work to do, but all those will be done before the end of the year. And then we also have the other project that will be done by the end of the year is the Grandview Intersection and 36th Street Roundabout Project. So that shall be, also will be done by the end of the year. So those are actually four projects will, are being removed from the project list. And then in addition, we have three projects in which we've updated the funding status due to recent grant awards. Those are project number six, the Chambers Creek Road Roundabout, 67th Avenue Phase Three Project, which is project 12, and project 14, 40th Street Phase Three. Each of those, we actually had some grant funding for actually all of them, but we received in this last year a little bit more. So it's always nice, more is, more is better from that standpoint. And then finally, we've updated the schedules and costs for each of the different projects to reflect current costs. So approval of the six-year plan does not commit city to any financial expenditures. Rather, each project is reviewed individually by the city council each year in the relevant, or each relevant budget cycle as a component of the capital improvement plan. The approval of the plan, however, does create eligibility for the city to apply for various grant opportunities. Many grant, grant funding sources require a project in question to appear in the city's TIP in order to be eligible for funding. In addition, this plan provides an indication to our other jurisdictions of our city's transportation and planning needs in the upcoming years. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. So far, I have Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Jack, three questions, one comment. Number one, thank you for the executive summary. That is really great. Much appreciated. Number two, you mentioned that you were looking to raise the road, which makes sense down there on the spit. How does that affect the approach to the houses, though?
And that's the challenge. It's, it's very limited. We probably can raise it no more than a foot, probably, because of, it's such a unique challenge here because so many of the driveways are very short, right? And so that's, that's where you have to be a combination of trying to raise it a little bit, and then also add some sort of other protection to kind of mitigate. So that's the, it's, it's tricky, for sure. But it's, it's not going to be like raising it by six feet because it just wouldn't be able to work with the driveway access.
I appreciate that. It hasn't happened in our city, but I've seen it in other communities not too far from here where they did just that. They raised it and it became a real major problem of access into people's driveways and garages.
Yep.
To do that. The second question I have, 67th Avenue Phase Two project, you said it's been removed. Is that the part of the street that, where they just laid in the sewer there and paved over and laid down temporary striping? And if so, where are we with the permanent striping for that?
So the 67th Avenue Phase Two is actually, that's where it becomes a little, little confusing because we, we got Phase Two funding before we got Phase One. So Phase Two project is the one that's actually between Cirque Drive and, and.
Bridgeport.
Bridgeport Way. So out kind of by Fred Meyer.
Okay.
So that's the one that, right now, actually, the only thing we're waiting on to get that one finalized is the, we're still waiting on the power service cabinets to be able to energize the lights. And so, but the other one is Phase One. That area is still in the plan, and that'll be under construction next year.
Okay. And then my last question, and this is, has really not to do with the TIP, but it's in here, my target of opportunity right now. Down there on Bridgeport Way, as it transitions into Lakewood, I noticed most recently, we've laid some very, very large sewer pipe. I'm going to presume that's the temporary sewer pipe that overlies the sidewalks down there. So now there's no access for people to ambulate across the sidewalks there. Is that semi-permanent? Is that temporary? If so, how long?
So that's the, related to the county's sewer repair project that's going on. At the, they have to do the repair. It's kind of in the vicinity, actually, of where Walmart is. However, in order to do the repair, they've had to construct a bypass of sewer line. And then unfortunately, they need to run it on one side of the street, which blocks the sidewalk. They're telling us it's probably about, overall, it's going to be about a year total, although they are about four months into that year. So maybe about another, you know, eight months or so that they have to do the project, you know, barring any unforeseen, you know, some things that come up, which is possible when you're dealing with, they're doing like a, they have to, they're doing some special lining in place so they don't have to dig up the sewer line. But, you know, that could come with some, you know, delays, but hopefully, hopefully. but hopefully, hopefully, it's smooth sailing for them.
Okay. Would it make sense for us then to close that sidewalk at 67th so that folks don't walk down there and then cross the street?
Yeah, it's it's they're supposed to. I noticed that myself just yesterday, in fact, when I was driving. It looked like the where it closed off, something happened where the barricade got pushed in the wrong way. And so I think they need to you're 100% correct. They need to address that. So the sidewalk's closed at the intersection so no one gets confused and runs further down.
Great. It just keeps people out of crossing in the middle of the street. Okay, thanks. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCloskey.
All right. Thank you. So on project number 16, Sunset Drive, there's construction of some more concrete curb gutter, bike lane, and sidewalks, which is wonderful. That's all excellent and good news. As we think about doing that, is there is there something going on that we could help to reduce the speed along Sunset Drive? I get complaints all the time about people speeding along that stretch stretch of road from Circ all the way through to 27th Street?
Yeah, that certainly is a challenge. If we, you know, and any of these things, of course, are dependent on getting funding. But ultimately, we do find if once we have if we can get both sides, I mean, it helps with just one side, but if both sides of the of the street are improved and we get that extra landscaping kind of buffer with the street trees, we do see a bit of a traffic calming effect. We in average, we're seeing about a five mile an hour average reduction in a lot of those cases. But yeah, we certainly, whenever we look at that opportunity in Sunset, it has always been a bit of a challenge, right, for the speed. And so that is also the intent to try to figure out ways to calm traffic where we can. It is arterial, so we have some limitations because we need to make sure it has unobstructed flow for emergency services. But any any way we can look to try to address that, the speeding challenge that folks are seeing, we certainly will do.
Yeah. But this doesn't include landscaping on this one. We need additional funding for that? Because I know with the landscaping
It would. It'll include landscaping if where the where the we have available. It's just
It is a narrow patch.
Yeah, it would where we have availability, we but we wouldn't do a median, but we would have the plant landscape planter strip where right of ways available.
Okay, like similar to 35th Street?
Similar, yeah.
Similar to that? Okay, well, that should help with some of that.
Yep.
Okay. And then the next project up above, 40th and Bridgeport Intersection. I would be really excited to learn a little bit more about the intersection improvements on that. And as as also as it aligns to the traffic flow, as you know, through that, my famous complaint is out of the Safeway Shopping Center and when people are turning left, especially when the turn signal is activated on Bridgeport, that is turning left into onto 40th Street there. Because there's one, two, three different engagements of traffic into that one small little area. It backs up. You've heard me many times, Jack, I know. So I won't regurgitate it now. But I will be really interested in the design and how to improve all that that intersection. I know it's a problematic intersection for several different reasons, even though with the signals and everything, it does provide safe pedestrian access across there. So if you have details in my next staff session, I would I would I would like to hear that.
It's very schematic at this point. We haven't started the formal design yet. But certainly, when we do the, you know, design and overall analysis of that intersection, it we definitely will take the that driveway and any impacts that into consideration.
All right. I really appreciate that. Thank you. And lastly, there is a meeting on Thursday about the Chambers Creek Bridge replacement at 3 o'clock. I'm going to attend that because Chambers Creek and how that all aligns and what they're doing there. Borders are town and I am extremely interested in how the when they're tearing down the fish ladder, reconstructing or actually tearing down, reconstructing the bridge and how they're going to mitigate the traffic going through there because it's a heavily used road and how Pierce County will Pierce County is supposed to be there, too. So how Pierce County is going to configure all of that. It's with the Chambers Creek Foundation. It's a it's an update. And also, it's it sounds like they're going to be talking about some of those infrastructure changes and how that's going to also improve the health of the of the creek and increase the salmon spawning opportunities up into Chambers Creek as well.
When did you say that was?
Thursday at 3 o'clock. I'll send an email to you.
That's good.
To confirm all of that.
Our friends at the county kind of sometimes forget that half that bridges are, and so they
They do. That's why I'm here telling you now.
Good. I appreciate that.
Because I get emails from the Chambers Creek Foundation all the time, you know, I sometimes respond to them. So and that just happened to pop up, and I was quite surprised. So and I'm glad to see it's on our our list here. But I think it would be beneficial for Pierce County to also know that it's on our traffic improvement project list for funding and how maybe we can augment some of that partnership to make better improvements about that area, too.
Yeah, certainly. I'll see. I might if you inform me that information, I'll I'm unfortunately, I'll be out of town at that date, but I'll see if another engineer can also join you with that. I think that would be
Okay.
Good. Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up to our attention.
All righty. You take care.
All right. No. Councilmember Worthington, did you have any comments? All right, I'll just do oh, sorry.
Thank you for the opportunity.
No. Councilmember Boykin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. It's just a quick clarifying question. The only way that a project is removed off of the tip is if, in fact, it is scheduled to be completed or already completed by the end of that fiscal year. Is that true?
There is. There could be an opportunity for any reason either if staff or council determine that that project is no longer appropriate to to be moved forward, then it also could be removed.
Okay. But just so that I'm clear, that's not the case with any of the four projects that's been identified as removed currently?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's all I had, Mayor Protam.
All right. Thank you. I just got a couple of quick comments. First, again, I also appreciate the executive summary. I support the list as it stands. Just a couple of traffic-related things here just real quick that I wanted to bring up. One is, and I think we've talked about this before, but when when you guys restriped the road on Bridgeport right outside of Fred Meyer and took out the center turn lane, what I have seen people doing is using the turn lane into the project from nowhere into that empty gravel lot as a turn lane. So basically, we're getting people in the habit of turning into what could be oncoming traffic because there is nothing happening in that lot. I don't know if there's any plans for anything to happen in that lot. But people are just using that turn lane as a center lane rather than if you know what I can you do? Can you visualize what I'm talking about?
Yeah. And they're using it primarily like a transition lane as a exit at Fred Meyer, probably.
Right. As the exit Fred Meyer turn left and they want to turn left onto 67th, they just go right into that lane and skip it. And I think it's creating a bad habit for that particular area. So I don't know if there's going to be a restriping opportunity or if there's somebody can actually move in across the street. But I would like to revisit what we're doing there right now because I don't think it's particularly safe. So if you guys could take a look at that one at some point.
Sure. Yeah.
And then related to it, what you just talked about with the bike lane on 67th, I appreciate the explanation. But I would and I understand that your logic behind the decision, it makes sense. But I would ask that you evaluate things like that also with a risk-based assessment, too. Because for one block, we have no bike lane, which means either people are going to be riding in traffic, or they're going to do try and cross traffic to go to the bike lane on the other side of the road and come back. It just if I would feel better if I knew there was some kind of risk-based decision-making process as you went into those make those not just a cost base. I understand the cost part.
Yeah.
So
We technically, we have it's actually no bike lane because we've we have posted bike lane closed signs on the other side of the Mildred and Bridgeport Intersection. So effectively, we've closed the bike lane the entire way. So it's it's where there is width for a bike lane, it's just a shoulder at this point. So there are we haven't hopefully, we haven't we're not striping any bike lane symbols at this point. That would be done later. And any signage referring to bike lanes in that area have been or at least should have been removed at this point. So
Okay.
So at least from that standpoint, similar to kind of like the sidewalk closed, you know, the we have to momentarily close it so there isn't that so people have the opportunity earlier, you know, like at the basically at the intersection to know that the bike lane is not going to be available. They need either transition into the travel lane or the sidewalk.
Okay, that's good to know. But yeah, that intersection for bikes is a nightmare already.
It is. It's
So any clarity we can offer bikers saying you've got to do something different would be helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
And that is all my comments and questions. Is there any more from any council members? All right. Seeing none, that was the last item on our agenda other than juridement. So thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.